To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Mr. Masrini?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Okay.
Mrs. Lesnick?
Here.
Mr. Tora?
Present.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Kearney?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask anybody in the audience who has a public comment, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Can I get an hour of copies? What I want to say that-
Certainly.
When I started out, it was three minutes, and then I should go over three minutes, and then I thought of more and more and more. That's why I said I wouldn't have been thinking about this. How many other parts?
The walls are not- Do you want me to get them on?
Uh, yeah. The other parts are all lying. Grabbing the corner. There's more than one because the paper folks are saying that they- Does this can walk on just this?
No, 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 this is the, this is the, you know, this, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, wow. Okay. My name is Kathy Jamison. I'm at a 1376 Raymond Drive. And first of all, I'm thanking you for this opportunity to address my concern is about the otherwise very beautiful new building. Thank you. But I do have some safety concerns, and I'm going to speak specifically about the balcony railing. I was a rehab nurse for 20 years. The people of rare, probable, and debilitating accidents were my patients. Among them were falls over barriers. So, uh, my son is over six feet tall with sneakers on, and the top of the railing hits him just below his belly button. Add to that his higher center of gravity because he's male, it's a higher risk. Females are taller too now, as each generation is getting taller, and they also wear heels, which adds to height and instability. So, consider the heights of the next generation of students and staff that will be attending this campus. Additional risks include pubescent adolescent episodes of awkwardness, mindlessness, clumsiness, and unpredictable movements from excited justing to range. These can indeed lead to bumps, scares, fights, and intentional or accidental falls that leave more belongings. Thinking about the fall's belongings, I could see even my own daughter holding her Chromebook or some heavy binder book and excitedly seeing a friend down there leaning over and, whoops, there goes the heavy belonging of somebody's head or back. So, there's another reason. In the hospital, the number one cause of falls is unexpected movement. So, as caretakers, we were trained to expect the unexpected and to learn to anticipate it, then initiate a plan to prepare and prevent it as much as possible. From safetyrisks.net, quote, "Our opinion is that building codes and standards are a minimum requirement, and there is an overriding legal obligation to fully assess the risk and go above and beyond minimal standards if required." The main point is to properly assess- this is the state full capital words- properly assess the risk and implement appropriate controls. We know that safety standards and practices are constantly changing. This is largely due to cumulative tragedies. Codes have all changed because all have the names of victims attached to their implementation. Since Charters Valley is rightly teaching innovation and critical thinking skills and is building a great new school to meet anticipated future needs, then let's practice what we teach and innovate on this anticipated, anticipated safety need. Understandably, there will be a cost for this guarantee to be less than the awards for long-term permanent or injury resulting in death. Improbable, yes, but I'm here because I know that improbable happens, and I couldn't live with myself if someone got hurt while I saw the risk and did nothing. I am not the only parent who shares this concern. Um, I did attach some pictures. Sorry, here's where I'm black and white. The cops probably were shocking. Ideas, made some plexiglass, some poles, uh, you can put, you can, you know, the collaborative thing where you get the shop involved. This is DIY. You know, this example right here, you can put little hooks around this, hook it in so you get the airflow. You get the little plants which have beauty and healthy air quality as the floor and carpets are going to be real high over the end construction. Would I say anything?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for putting together and bringing charge.
Okay, there's a little more written there, but I wanted to-
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
I think it's a very valid concern and a great observation, and, you know, we'll discuss it as a board with our construction team and see what, what we can come up with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kate Berry. I live 123 Oss Croft Road. Um, I came with some safety concerns as well. Uh, Kathy beating through the railing. We were not dealing with two moms in a one house. There's a lot of work, a lot of that going on. And I know that at Risher High School, my alma mater, um, they did actually have enough putting plexiglass in because of project house, just for the record. Another concern I had was the windows. Um, there are kind of casement windows. They cranked open, but they cranked open wide enough the students, if you were so inclined, could fit through them. They are well-known among the student body as the suicide windows. Just thought I'd bring that to your attention. I was concerned about the space being a little too open. I don't know what the plan is. I think if work could maybe make parents feel more comfortable, there is a plan even a lockdown or an active shooter situation, it seems, I don't, I just don't know where the students would go in the comments area, I guess. The construction personnel may be in the building with the students. I'm wondering what safety precautions are being taken there as far as background checks. I'm very concerned about the air quality on the campus. If you could maybe put my mind at ease that all the OSHA regulations are being followed, because it seems like there's an awful lot of dust up there. It looks like at the past meetings, it's been addressed a little bit, but that the testing day has been stopped. I'm not sure if that's air testing or what you're discussing, but- And I don't know if there's any asbestos in the old school. I know the dating of it is right, but I would assume that's what we've taken here. The tunnels, to me, look like a fire hazard. Please bear with me. My dad was a safety guy at FedEx. So, I, I was born this way.
It's in your blood. It's in your blood. It's in your blood.
Yes, sir, it is. I was, I was born this way. When I looked at the tunnels, all I could think was it was really crowded for all the kids. They don't look like they are, um, lame retardant structures, and I'm sure they don't have sprinklers in them. I just, I'm concerned that-
Are you referring to the temporary hallways?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, I just keep thinking about the littering bridge. When, when you have a package construction site, accidents can happen, and those temporary hallways, um, made me a little bit nervous. A little bit tight. So, that really, um, which are my safety concerns. I really appreciate you allowing me to move to you today. I did bring copies, um, which I will leave here. I'm going to pay you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. They're all well thought out as well.
Could you?
Yeah, our construction team is here tonight, so we will have him address some of those issues while they're here tonight. Anyone else from the audience up to catch a call for comment? Okay. On to our recognitions. Miss yourself, do you have any recognitions tonight?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight? All right, on to our superintendent's report. Did I report tonight? All right, on to our consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda, 4.1 through 4.5? I'm sorry, action discussion is on. You just, there's not, nothing on the consent agenda, right?
Nothing.
Yeah. So, we're going to move on to the action discussion agenda. 4.1 is to get a motion to approve the salary increase for the assistant superintendent for school leadership. Mr. Scott Seltzer motion to approve the 3% increase to Mr. Scott Seltzer, assistant superintendent for school leadership, pay salary effective July 1st, 2017. Can I get a motion to do that? Mrs. Murphy, seconded by Mrs. Lesnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, she, she, uh, she voted.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. She's one of the two last, in case you want.
I want to thank you for stepping up.
4.2, this is a motion to approve salaries for Act 93 employees, confidential secretaries, and individual contracted personnel per agreements as determined by the Board of School Directors, Charters Valley School District, effective July 1st, 2017. These, these salaries were all discussed and unanimously approved. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? Can I get a motion to approve 4.2? Mr. Cora, seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. 4.3, approve a service agreement. This motion is to approve service agreement with UPMC, Western Psychiatric Institute and Clinic for specialized academic assistance for students. Scott, can you give us some background on that?
Yeah, uh, basically, we, we get agreements with certain hospitalization to really help work with our students that may identify that need that special help. So, UPMC is, um, one of those groups who do this. We just need to approve the right to do that.
This contract, uh, the service agreement, do we, do we have, did we see it? Has it been on?
It was, I think it was on the last memo, Friday memo.
It was on Friday.
Friday.
Everybody have any questions on the agreement? Okay, anything?
Yeah, I can cut it back. In, um, in the context of the, the version I was looking at for this year, are there any changes from last year, whether it be costs or any other, um, initiatives or restrictions that they may add to the contract this year? Any differences?
No.
And from the policy effective, is it safe?
I believe it is, uh, because it's usually per student. So, I can't give you a definite answer. It'll stay the same or it'll be increased or decreased, but it's normally done per student.
But the per student cost has, aren't you? Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve 4.3, service agreement with UPMC, Western Psychiatric Institute and Clinic for specialized academic assistance for students? Mrs. Lesnick, seconded by Mr. Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Mr. Kearney's abstaining. Any opposed? So moved. At this point, I'd like to ask our construction team manager, Mr. Jason Day, to step forward and give us a construction update.
Okay, your summary is, uh, it'd be running there, monthly report. Clearly, the, the first, um, item I had was, uh, we made it. School started as scheduled. So, that goes with the thanks of everybody involved in the district. You guys sitting in front of us, the staff, the administration, custodians, a lot of effort was put into making it fit. So, uh, school started on time, so that was clearly a good thing. So, we're kind of back to business as usual for the construction for the new phases. So, with that, we'll have our schedule updates through August, uh, early in the next day or two from those general contractors who sit down and start to dive back into those, so those phases, uh, were made on time. So, the middle school, um, again, Phase 1A, which was occupied. First school is substantially complete. The punch list process is ongoing. Again, that'll occur on weekends, early in the morning, or after school, uh, in coordination with the staff over there. Phase 1B, the, the next phase, we're into the new middle school. Lots going on in there. Drywall has commenced on the second floor. Finishing is ongoing. First floor, some painting is starting to occur. We're working right until after you look at the building towards the gym, um, that work. Uh, mechanical rooms up and running, chiller, pumps, boilers are going to get started here in the next few days. So, there have been a few, I'll call them complaints or comments about temperature in the building. So, once the boilers are fired up, that'll help, um, solve that issue between the chiller being operational and the boiler coming up. So, um-
And that's, and that's also a result of the fact that chiller was built to accommodate space and is not currently accommodating.
Part of that, and we ran into that actually a little cold spell last week where it did pretty chilly at night. So, we didn't have that heat to knock the chill off in the morning. But we, we don't expect that to be an issue before. Uh, the bridge connector, the curtain wall, glass, the frame is done. The site work really is the next big push out there. Comment on the dust, uh, that's an ongoing kind of challenge with the general contractor. He does, um, use water to try to keep the dust down at times. Sometimes it does get out of control. But we have had conversations with them plenty of times and notified them accordingly. So, we'll call over again tomorrow on that specific issue.
Jason, maybe one thing we could think about during construction is, uh, I don't know how the, how our filtration system is on the, on the HVAC. Is there some way of monitoring the filtration system, what the fresh air coming in?
Yeah, there's, there's filters and they'll get changed out. The contractors change out all the filters and all go get the maintenance, um, kind of scheduled when the changes are, we can-
It's all worth it. Really should pay attention to, you know, whatever the normal protocol is, probably step it up.
We can do it. So, that's really the steps to the middle school. That next milestone for the middle school is the Christmas break, essentially to finish 1B, which is essentially the building. The gym addition, you recall, active addition date technically by contract until the end of January. They're going to try to pump that up as much as possible. So, the high school, um, just kind of jumping through these phases. Phase 1A was the auditorium. Uh, that's been done for a while. The replacement air handling units were changed out this summer. That went well. They're up and running. So, that's, that's a good thing. The performing arts area, uh, again, was turned over a while back. Punch list things are starting to happen in there. I need to try to close that punch list out. And Phase 1C, your new tech ed and, uh, DMC, the digital media center, again, was turned over for school, and punch list is ongoing in that area as well.
All right, on the auditorium, Mr. Kelly, would you address the, uh, the light switch and all that stuff that we talked about back in the spring? Is, is that installed, working properly? Everybody happy with that, or where are we at with that?
I can take that one. They're actually working on that right now.
Okay.
We talked about it today.
So, the electrician is, is finalizing some of the, um, electrical wire pools in locations like that, and they're going to work with David Nash and his organization, uh, to start doing the programming and get the head end equipment installed.
So, we're on, we're on that right now?
Yeah, we're on that road. Hopefully, we can get that wrapped up in the next month.
Sorry to break your mojo up.
No, that was, I know Chuck's half the body. He's waiting for it. He really. So, the high school, so really Phase 1 is essentially in the books. We're cleaning the punch list, as I mentioned. Uh, on to Phase 2, which is the high school tower. Clearly, if you've driven the site, you see the high school, old high school tower is gone. Most of the debris is almost out of here. There's some steel remaining. Some floor slabs they got to pull up, but the network is occurring. Cafeteria service area, kind of that one connector area, um, is ongoing. There's some steel that's finishing up and some semi-blockwork happening in that area. But all the major MVP infrastructure was reconnected through that area in time for school. And the foundations actually have started. Um, there were 12 caissons for the new tower. Those are actually installed. Uh, the spread footing and grade beams are going to start here, uh, in the next week or two.
Hey Jason, that one there is going up in the pool area. Is that tunnel finished?
Yeah, so the pool, um, was lagging somewhat, uh, just due to the, you know, how those buildings tied together. It was a pretty challenging effort to try to get that done by school, but, uh, really, at this point, they've moved the temporary wall away from the diving boards. The diving boards, I believe, are turned back into place. Lights are on. Pool filter room, all the equipment is operating. Some go main has started to filter the water through. So, really, the goal is to have the pool back by Monday.
That could move all the testing and water along.
Yeah, Billy will do all that. He, you know, right now is trying to get the heater-
Yeah.
Heater attached and working, so the heat and water is chilly right now.
Today had a little lot of issues back today. I'd be like, if the manufacturer reps come out tomorrow.
But he, he's been filtering the water for a couple of days. He's testing it. He's testing it today and it'll come around.
Jason, how many total caissons are we, uh?
There was actually only 12. There's a portion of that new addition towards your auxiliary gym, uh, where your rock is a little deeper design, with the caissons there. As you move kind of west from that auxiliary gym, the bedrock gets shallow, so the building's on its spread footing.
Great.
Really, the last area was that service area behind, uh, the existing kitchen is, is done and turned over. There's some carpet we do have to put in, a couple of offices that have been turned over. All gold and custodians to use that area as well. So, that's really where we stand, and, um, like I mentioned, just really getting back into business as usual on the construction side, um, trying to separate the, the students and the staff and the construction. So, there are temporary barriers, kind of where it's the other part of the middle school. All the trades are requiring to provide their pre-clearances, uh, their Pennsylvania criminal clearance, child abuse, and the FBI. So, we have all those in place. Everybody is on site is passive essentially or badge on site.
Can I review this? So, I, I get all the clearances. I review all the clearances, make sure that they're appropriate to be on school route.
And from a temporary hallway perspective, could you give us some insight into that? I know they're, they're, uh, forward containers, right? So, they're made out of metal.
Yeah, there's a, there's actually an idea that was suggested by, uh, Rycon to use the seat containers, which were made out of steel. So, if a fire hazard there, I wouldn't be concerned about those. Now, there are intermediate kind of vestibules that got built, where there's the emergency exits. So, the overall approach was, went in front of Collier Council a couple of years ago, and, uh, they did not, at the time requires, to have any sprinklers or anything of that nature in there. So, they are a temporary condition. Uh, so, we did walk all of those with Collier Council's inspector, and, um, he was satisfied with how they were constructed and the burnt seat addresses and the locations for all those.
And that was before we opened school?
That was before we opened.
Before we were actually permitted open school, Collier had to give us the okay, um, with all that protection.
Thank you. Could you address the, oh, we have some seat, uh, campus safety officers.
We do have campus safety officers stationed throughout, uh, those temporary hallways to keep an eye on students, to make sure that kids are moving, and also to help direct students when they maybe get turned around and they want to go to the middle school or high school. So, they help them with that as well.
And they're in their all day, correct?
They're in their all day.
So, um, I don't have any change of words for you tonight. So, really, the financial set is kind of where it's been the last couple of months. So, as we move forward, I'll present those to you with the prior to next word. The one item that is on here we've talked about is the pension tank liner. That work is nearing completion, so we're going to finalize, uh, that price for beauty construction. I'll put that in front of you for the next couple of weeks for a final round.
Jason, the, the windows in the middle school, we, we talked. Are there screens that are supposed to go in there as well, too?
There, there are not screens, um, that were specified, so we probably would need to adding those or probably putting a stop just on the windows, so it doesn't open.
So, we'll, we'll look into what's the best way to do that.
So, we'll have to begin with the design professional and looking at that and the window manufacturing. But I would anticipate you could add a stop, so it doesn't open more and more.
Those are the, the windows.
Yeah.
It's a good concern.
But that's all I have, is-
Really like talking to the architects about that, about ideas. I like the idea about the DIY, you know, utilize that new tech ed. You know, that's the direction to choose together.
Speaking of the tech ed, we, uh, it's all fired up. Any, any comments or?
Well, it's first week of school, second week of school, so I don't know how much production they have actually started yet. Still think they're designing, making sure kids are, um, certified in one of those, the equipment. But every, it, what's really great, uh, walking, I know this is teachers, I know the kids, it's a lot of spots throughout the, throughout the buildings. It's just, uh, there's, there's an energy. I was talking to Frank around today, and he feels there's, even with his teachers, there's, there's an energy about this project, um, and anticipation. So, a lot of things that they would be an obstacle maybe or a frustration, they're overlooking. They're, they're finding ways to overcome those things because of the anticipation for, you know, what they see at the middle school, what they see in the tech ed. So, they're really, uh, really proud of our staff for, you know, they're not, uh, at least I'm not getting, I'm not getting a whole lot of, you know, this, that, so I'm really proud of all of our students, uh, because they're overcoming a lot of distractions, maybe some frustrations that they normally had to benefit our kids. And that's where I, their focus needs to be. Their focus needs to be on educating kids, and I commend them for doing that, um, to start school when there was a lot of issues that they overcame.
Jason, can you give us an update on the middle, the old middle school gym and where are we at with that?
Yeah, so the old middle school gym, auxiliary gym, um, I think your staff is going to try to move the rest of the furniture out of this weekend.
Yeah, they're hoping to get it all cleared out this week.
And then we have, uh, Merritt Electric probably has about a week, week and a half worth of work in the ceiling space, and just try to get cleaned up at that point.
Idea this time.
The goal was to process it first.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, any more questions or comments?
OSHA came through.
Yeah, that's a good point. We-
I've been saying it.
We had a, I don't want to call it surprise inspection, but OSHA pulled projects from the Dodge report, and they pulled the high school project last Wednesday morning. Uh, so OSHA hit the site and walked the high school construction and received no citations. So, that was, you know, a real good thing. In the construction world, when actually it's decided, it's kind of a certain instructional time. Uh, the trades and the prime really are focused on the safety of the construction and everything that the staff and students are processing. So, that was, that was a good thing, that though obviously we didn't do any safety issues. We do, uh, we would not be surprised if they come back, um, to check out the middle school construction. They only really had time that day to do the high school. Clearly, he was walking right there with the design of the middle school, so they're prepared. You know, we constantly go over safety at every meeting that we have, and, um, we'll be ready.
No, just the safety of the contractor, of, you know, the safety of the students and the staff and everybody else.
And talk, and talk to contractors, I've kind of just mingled with some over the course of this time. A lot of them were, this is, they do a lot of school, are working in the schools. They go from one job to another, doing education. So, I thought that was, I mean, they're real, real- So I thought that was, I mean, they're really stupid. Students being around and just that.
Yeah, you have a lot of school contractors, so they're, they're well aware of what to do and not to do. The only other comment was about a surpasses. That's been addressed, that was in a report done by a third party. Some of that work was in the scope, so that's been taken care of. And it will be taken care of in the middle of middle school next fall.
Yeah, they do it in the basement first before they tear anything down. They go and they do it in the basement to make sure, and then that's when it starts to come down.
The other one is, how would we relay the information on, you know, active shooter policy or procedure or, you know?
Well, so that's a tricky situation because you don't want anybody, you don't want anybody in the public to know your procedures.
Right. He's comfortable with it.
Yes. So Julie can probably speak to this. Before we even started school, we walked through that. So we walked fire drills, we walked lockdowns, we walked those situations. High school, all the buildings do that. So that they have a plan prepared for every building for multiple situations.
And the school resource officer.
And we have school resource officer helps walk through this. We have Alice training this year. So a lot of our staff is going to be, is trained in Alice training. I think there's one building left that has to go through the actual drill part of Alice training. And that's sort of new. Instead of hiding, it's, you know, you find, you find a shooter, if you can get out, get out. You all get out to a specific place and we're not going to tell you until it happens. So, yeah, so there's, so the principals, our SROs, you know, they're involved. They really are. And we take a lot of trainings, you know, we bring in people for Alice training and they run us through the gym. And, you know, we get, we are participants. We're, you know, and we go through different categories. I got shot with an air soft pellet and, you know, you feel that. And so our teachers go through that, our custodians have gone through that. We've had those Alice training seminars run by our SROs. What's really nice is all of our assistant principals are Alice trained, presented. So they can train people in the Alice training because they went through that training, training, training. So safety is something that we really take a look at and we meet about it and talk about it. We want to make sure that our kids are as safe as, you know, we can possibly make them during the day. And our adults as well.
They were all great persons.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Jason, thank you for your.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you for hitting that deadline. Would have been a much different meeting.
Four point five is once again, if you're studying publicly, would you like to make a closing comment?
Salute shoulder burger. Or do you want to try it? I mean, what am I saying? A couple of things that I just, I want to bring up and I want to make sure that we're pressing them. As there are only a couple of us that leave the building to go to other schools, twice this week, I was almost front ended by tractor trailers coming up the wrong direction. That's something I think we need to address. Like, you know, it's one way in and around the building and out. Well, they're coming up the back entrance the wrong direction.
There are construction guys.
There are delivery trucks. They're delivery trucks.
Delivery trucks, okay. Well, I'm just trying to address the question.
Yeah, they're delivery trucks. Now, twice this week, and Donna happened to be behind the one guy, who is? She goes, I don't know. I'll see if I can, you know, see him or whatever. I go, hey, can't come up that way. So that's a concern just for everyone, not just me. You know, but parents coming up and they're leaving or whatever and that truck comes around, you know, you just don't know. So that's something that needs to be addressed. In the performing arts wing, we have no phones. We have no ability to call for any assistance other than our cell phones. And Jason and I talked about the locks on the doors. We've had a few issues where things are getting stolen out of the rooms. And so Jason and I talked about that and we're going to need keys. They put the new locks in, we just need the keys. So that's something that he and I had discussed. And the last thing I wanted to discuss, and this hasn't come up this evening, and I just, from a union perspective, would very much like to encourage that. There's a candidate replacement. We don't know if you're appointing someone. We don't know if you're just going to let it go through the process. Can you speak to that?
I'm glad you mentioned this, I just, Scott slid a note over to say you want to talk about it. We do want to talk about it. So in executive session, we have decided we are not going to appoint a short-term director.
Okay.
And we are going to go through the election process. And we will welcome with our new director on December sixth or seventh, whatever our meeting session meeting is.
Excellent.
Anyone else would like to make another comment?
See you tonight. Wouldn't encourage you. Two things, you just mentioned the superintendent replacement.
Actually, we were discussing the.
Board member.
The director. Yeah, so we're missing one board member right now.
I see.
Yeah, so we're going to replace them through the election process. Our superintendent search is another concern.
Hi, thank you for having wonderful candidates.
So what?
When you mentioned the pool area, I, having had children with very sensitive systems, I addressed last year with maintenance about the chloraminated water and that that does not dissipate well. And while the reconstruction is going on and new HVAC system is happening, could they do a lot more to vent the air out of the indoor pool? Because it just sits in there and floor meets are extremely toxic to everybody's new disment trains. So everybody's, everything are, and I give them articles on things that have happened to like swimmers who were, you know, that have been injured and everything from basically spending too much time in indoor pools. So they could update.
No pressure.
I think they, I think, did you guys do something already about the?
Once, okay. What are we doing there? Well, no one's been in there now, right? So when it kicks back on, we have a temporary. Oh, okay, we go back to the existing.
Will it be eventually improved?
We're open to all suggestions.
Because when it was active, I could smell it many hallways away.
We can definitely always, you know, keep looking at that.
Yep, there's infinite number of things that could be improved in the district, so we're going to just keep working away.
I won't, I won't go today.
You can come back anytime. Yeah, right.
Anybody else?
Can I address the office?
Absolutely.
I'm surprised, actually, I know someone who works there and I didn't know that you guys don't. If you don't, your offices don't have phones or your phones tomorrow or.
Prior to our meeting tonight, we did have an executive session that discussed litigation issues that district brought to our attention. Do I have any other questions or comments from anyone? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Mrs. Lesnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alfie still with us?
Yes, thank you.
Moving on. Have a good night. We are adjourned.